This meeting to order. Six oh two for Frontier.
And it's six oh two for the Union. Well, Union thirty-eight.
The first thing is to approve, review and approve the minutes if there's changes. I'll let Ken go through the changes. We'll do a poll.
I just been reading the minutes noted with the votes. We're all tabulated to include absentees as negative votes, which is not normal procedure. And also, we had a situation where we recorded all of the attendees for the Union when in fact, we only had eight voting members. So the votes have been changed to re... For the Union, all votes are noted as unanimous at eight zero zero.
Okay.
All Frontier regional votes, except for the vote on the minutes, are...
Ten and oh.
Are ten to nothing. Instead of the, as noted, what was it, thirteen five and zero?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The minutes, the minutes approved on the thirty-first was collective of three voting members now here at the seven oh three on the first page of the minutes.
And then finally...
It can't be ten and oh. It has to be seven and oh.
Seven oh three.
It has to be eight and oh because it's eleven and oh.
Well, there's only ten of us here. Minus.
Oh, okay. So...
Do you have a poll? Let's see. Vote for the attendees. And then the last change that I would note is under executive session, we should be noting that Mr. Modesto and non-voting committee members, Union committee members, were invited to attend.
So Judy, you have everybody? Almost?
Any questions on the changes to the minutes that we just noted?
For Frontier, both accept.
Second.
Bill and Cindy? All in favor for voting members at Frontier? We're all voting members. Thank you. Can you oppose any extensions? Let me...
I can.
So it'll be, it'll be ten oh one?
Yep.
I need to sneak in one.
It'll be nine oh one.
So a move for the more for the Union?
Can I, can we set that?
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Voting members.
Voting members only, I'm sorry. And propose extensions?
Well, Katie wasn't here last time. Ken wasn't here last time. Jan wasn't here last time. And Ashley wasn't here, so... So you've got four that weren't here, so it's whatever the vote is less at the end of four.
Four is here or four?
I'll still vote in favor of them. Well, you weren't here.
I know.
I'm just still voting in favor. Okay.
Okay, so I'll just object.
You take care of it.
Let's not spend our time here. Keep going.
Any public comment tonight? Okay. No unfinished business, new business, superintendent search process.
We are at a stage where by January thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen, we have to inform Mr. Modesto of the Union and Region's plans for the superintendency. And what we have here tonight is an agenda that presents first a vote to suspend a search for a superintendent of schools and appoint an internal candidate. And then the second step would be to appoint Darius as superintendent. This, the agenda was put together this way largely in response to the work that's been done to date by Darius. And, you know, the chairs met and talked about it and said, "We would like to present it this way." Given the work that he's done, I think the superintendent, the chairs were in agreement that we are supportive of Darius as a permanent superintendent for the Region and Union. So therefore, this is the agenda that was brought forward. And what we've done, as Darius, as you can see, has presented some notes on his quiet time since he started in July. I, you know, I found his work to be very good. I could support certainly the effort, not the effort, but the decision to suspend the search and appoint our interim superintendent as the full-time superintendent, so...
Do you approve the motion?
I'll take whatever you want to do.
Do you approve the motion to suspend the search on behalf of the Union?
There are motions to suspend the search for superintendent of schools. Who say for the Region?
I'll second for the Region.
Second.
Slow down. Judy's...
Just whatever. You guys just keep talking.
Who second for the Union?
I will, sir. Thank you. Peter?
Any discussion?
Oh. I just want to comment, I'd like to really be transparent with all of this. Last year, Darius was being considered for the interim position. I called an ethics attorney at the Massachusetts Ethics Office, just to figure out where I stood to all this. But Darius and I have known each other since childhood. He's a good friend of mine, and I just wanted to ensure that I was not overstepping my position, my elected position. So last year, I did file a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form. I filed it with all four towns, as well as Donna and Bob. And according to the ethics attorney, I'm okay to continue in my position. But I just wanted to be transparent with everyone here.
Does that mean you can still vote?
I can still vote. I can still vote for any position or any topic, whatever, that I feel that I can be unbiased of. And so if I do feel that I can't be unbiased, I remove myself.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. So Katie?
Can I just make a comment? I just wanted to add that when the chairs met, the agenda was put forward based on not just our own personal opinions of Darius's work to date, but on input we have received from other parties at our districts, so teachers, parents. I just want to be mindful, it's not just the chairs that are thinking he's doing a good job, but this is based on feedback of a broader nature, ideally, or at least that's what's my understanding.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you. I would concur that I have received feedback from administrators and others leading the schools in support of Darius's work.
I'd like to move a question for the Region.
Is there any other discussion for Frontier? All in favor? Opposed? Staying?
Any further discussion for the Union? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? Unanimous? Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
No, no. That was just one in the search.
One jumping.
Certified superintendent now, so...
Two are sitting in the audience.
They never know.
Next is the hiring of the superintendent.
We're with them. Yep. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Darius Modesto interim superintendent to a three-year term as superintendent of schools pending successful contract negotiations. Bob Decker would be so proud.
I think that's a debate about whether it should be two years or three years.
It's gotta be at least three by now.
I said three years.
So I...
There's, if it's by law.
Why don't we get a motion?
I made a motion.
Did you make a second, Phil?
Olivia made the second.
Somebody else did, but I will.
Olivia did.
We'll be talking. Hold on.
Could we... Do we make a motion to the Union of the same language?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Bill?
So I would also like to speak to the length of the contract. I would recommend, there's districts in the state, Boston, the city of Boston, I know does five years. And whether it's five years or four years, I don't think it should be three this first time, because the reason being that as an institution, it does not, it's not optimum for us as a school committee to have the expiring term of the superintendent take place the same year we negotiate all of our contracts. And that if we ever have to start over again, and I, you know, hopefully we won't for fifty years, but... But what if we do? What if we do have to start over again?
Imagine if you're walking...
If we start over again, it does not make sense for us to be hiring somebody, have them brand-new, and have to sit down and negotiate contracts for three years with everybody. And so I would like to see this either go to four years and then go back to three years, but we got it. I want to see it removed from the calendar, from the year that we have to do all of our contracts. And that institutionally, that makes sense to me, you know, regardless of who our superintendent is, so...
Phil, that's great.
So my current contract's a one-year interim position. If you're going to extend my contract by three years, it will then fall into an off year. So I guess what I think what Dr. Campbell was trying to say earlier, William James said earlier, was that are you, are you doing a two-year extension to make the three years total service? Or are you doing a three-year extension from the interim? Because you're, I imagine you want to coincide with the school year. So I have another half a year left as interim, so I think...
Negotiations should be done.
But you want to, you have to give a time limit for the negotiations to kind of do to do, so are you looking for a three-and-a-half-year contract or a conclusion of this contract with a three-year extension?
That's exactly what I was saying there.
That's what you're doing. The new, the new teacher contract won't start until...
But it's negotiated this year. So we will, if you do a three-year extension to this contract, it will then fall into the...
It'll fall, your, your last half year will be when you're leaving. If you were to leave, you'd be negotiating the contract. I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
I think you're right. The guy is sort of like...
Yeah.
Ignore if you have to settle.
If we made a provision to a four-year contract?
Well, let's see. I mean, if somebody wants to propose an amendment to the...
I would amend my initial motion and extend a four-year contract.
So you're, you're making a motion to amend to a four-year contract?
I'll second that.
So I can make an amendment, but like, what happens if I go with five?
I'll second four, too.
Try it, you'll see.
This will be fun?
I thought it was about years. I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
I seriously would like to amend mine to five years and have you reconsider.
So do I.
To amend your amendment.
Judy, you catching up on this?
Uh, I think, well, I have Trevor and Phil on a four-year contract for the Union, and I have Cindy, who's trying to...
Phil can't second.
He's not voting.
Do I have a second?
He can second me.
I need a second for the Union, then.
Do I have a...
I'll second.
Elaine? Thank you.
Okay, and now I have Cindy and Phil for five years.
Yep.
And if I can just, you want to do something with your side first before I get to Charlie?
That's up to my side if the...
Well, can anyone speak a little bit more to five versus the traditional three in terms of sort of, I mean, you just threw out something about Boston, I think you said, but in terms of like power, or maybe, you know, Darius, if you know, like, what are sort of the Western man's superintendents, typical kind of contract?
Three. We're trying, we're trying to get away from the teacher contract.
I totally get that. No, I'm getting, when I think...
There's some fives.
I'm trying to get more at the, you know, we can get away with that with four and then decide whether we are doing a big switch to, back to three, or to five, or to five. And I'm just saying, curious whether that's a big jump compared with what's typically done around here or not. That's all. Just so everyone has an idea.
Right, so there are districts in the state that are going to live your contracts. I think they're trying to lock in people, and I'm not trying to persuade a higher contract. I'd be happy with three. You know, going to four has to do with your negotiation here, that's your business decision, but they're just doing that because there is, there's not a plethora of superintendents out there. So they're locking in those because they can, so...
I'd do, I'd go with five.
Bill?
Yeah, this is superintendent number eight for me, sitting up here. And we've always done threes, but we've never had this kind of a situation before. We're taking, taking from within. You know, a lot of times, it's a three on a person that you, as a result of the search, like Jeff Welch was, like Lynn Wilson, things of that, and it's your people unfamiliar. This is a different handle, but this, this is as comfortable as I've been in most of the eight.
Well, Marty came with the, from within.
Right, yes.
We probably couldn't have gotten Marty to take a try.
And I'm sure he's quite...
And I was like, come to...
Sorry, Darius.
I'm deep for no comments.
So...
I mean, the only thing about going longer is there's a lot of things at, at play in a district like this in terms of finances, size, you know, all that, that, you know, I mean, Darius may not want to go that long. He may negotiate something better three years at a time, you know?
Whether they're three, five, or fifty-five, he can walk away anytime he wants to, like any other one can. The contract buys you plus a fair little in terms of, oh, you have to stay here five years, now you're done.
I didn't choose five for convenience of negotiations or that. I happen to like negotiations. I wish we had it every year for teachers and all that kind of thing, process. Sorry. But I did it because I, I have had a feeling of morale lift around here, and I've had a feeling of teamwork around here, and people smiling, and it's not, it's not all this backtalk and backstabbing, butter knives or otherwise. I just think it's a good place to be, and I want to keep that good place. And if things change for Darius and he wants to move on, and if things change for us, we can have that conversation, and I hope we will, be that transparent. But let's extend this so we don't have to look at this for another five years. That's the uncomfortable thing is having it approaching, the actual process I really enjoy, but having it come up, people are doing good jobs. And again, basically, it's the morale. It has nothing to do with anything else. I just like this place again a lot, and I'd like to keep that feeling.
It's all here and there.
Does anybody else want to? Judy?
I was just going to say, would you like to revise your...
Yes, I'd revise my... Second again, revise my motion.
Will you second that as well, Elaine?
I do.
Okay. So we'll call it a five-year.
Anybody else from Frontier on the five-year? Anybody else want to say their piece? Say anything for Frontier? All in favor? For Frontier? Opposed? Staying?
This, for the Union, any other comments? If not, only voting members, please. All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Anyway, just, thank you. I'm touched about the, you know, the looking to going to longer contract as you have faith in hopefully the direction of continuing to move this district, which is a positive one and one that works together. And as I said in my initial, I'm starting to go straight into administrative talk, as I said in my initial interview, it really is about us working together. And so I hope that we continue to be transparent with each other in directions we want to see our schools go, and working together for the common good of our communities, so this very unexpected night, so...
Mr. Chairman? I think procedurally, you may want to include in the motions that the committees respectively delegate chief of chairs who are intent to enter into negotiations with Darius for five-year contract. We are obviously not going to negotiate with him as a group, so we need to put the instrument in motion, which is, yes.
Does Judy have to do it? She really enjoys it.
You know?
When Cindy was sitting here, she could do that, right?
Oh, my gosh, I loved it, but I'll give it to you.
Okay. I just want to let you know, one year when Regina was here, I was also, for some reason, I was chair of Union Thirty-Eight and chair of Frontier, so she only had one person negotiating with, because for some reason, that year I was both, so I'm glad Ken is, that's fair, so...
So your suggestion was to amend?
Yeah.
Well, I actually said it right. I said pending successful contract negotiations, so we can make a motion.
Yeah, but I think you, I do think, I think you're right that you have to then confirm, like procedurally confirm that the chairs can negotiate on behalf of the...
Somebody made, Phil made a motion.
Phil made the motion?
Yes, I did. Second.
Mary seconded. Can you clarify chairs? Is it just you two, or is it all, all of the town?
One for Union Thirty-Eight, one for Frontier.
Chairs usually go into negotiations and then bring back the information to the group, and then we have a discussion whether it would be better, agree, or better, or whatever. They usually set the ground for us.
I would make that same motion for the Union.
Did you get the language, Judy?
A hundred percent, yes. Can I get a second?
Second from the US.
Thank you.
So that was Trevor and...
Marsha.
Trevor, Ash.
For Frontier, all in favor?
And for the Union? Again, voting only, voting members only, please.
Did you have a question, Judy?
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I don't want to throw this into chaos. Hopefully I'm not, but my memory is when we hired a superintendent, everybody voted.
No.
Because it's the job of the whole...
You mean the contractor or voting?
No, not tonight. Not to be, his recollection was it all, all members voted.
Well, we're hiring a superintendent, yeah.
On the final question.
I'm happy to take that as a secondary vote at the Union level, and we can check with council to see.
Right. And we don't all have waiting votes and stuff and all that?
Right.
And of course, we were frustrated because we don't have our agreements spelled out, so to be safe, my recollection is that one of our big jobs for everybody.
But the way I vote, the way to vote is for voting members only, correct me if I'm wrong. That's Frontier. It's all Frontier.
There's no waiting on the Union side, so we can, why don't we, we will take Union votes of all members present, just to be safe, and I will get the answer, and we'll ask council to clarify. So all in favor at the Union level? Non-voting and voting members, please. Somebody count one.
There he is.
Bob's here.
How excited he is, impeccable.
It was unanimous on the appointment. Yes, Judy?
Okay, you voted on the appointment?
Yes.
You're not voting on the negotiations, right?
I'm going to vote on the negotiations now as well.
And you got a fifteen count?
Yes. And the second round, Union, all voting and non-voting?
Which one are we voting on?
This is, you guys are the chairs to negotiate.
And are you not going to go back and do the suspension, too?
Ooh, good one, Judy.
Good catch. We will debunk the suspension as well.
I mean, I might have screwed up the count last time, but I...
I can't, I can't believe that that's required.
I don't think that that's required.
The whole thing is required.
To have voting members, you've got to do everything.
So, well, let's just be safe. David's raising issues, so we'll play it safe. And on the suspension, Union's, so how long is more time? And I see Union's voting against. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Ducks are here, son. Ducks voted yes.
So, yes. The next item on the agenda would be to decide to conduct a search for a traditional business manager position, or to decide a traditional search for the business manager position, either way. But this would be an effort to go to market, see if we get candidates that are satisfactory, and decide on a candidate following the normal course of events. Now that we have a permanent superintendent in place, seems like a much more natural process than last year, so...
I can provide two cents if you want me to.
Sure, absolutely.
We haven't negotiated that two cents yet, but we'll give it to you. TMS's contract with us does have extensions in it, so I do recommend that we look for a traditional, you know, the bottom line is calling a traditional versus a service agency. And I've had this conversation with TMS, so there's not that weirdness of that, of talking, looking for one while having another, as we've had a conversation on it. You know, they're providing our service this year, but I really, I miss having a, I know what it's like, so I've kind of done it, but just miss having a partner at the top where you can go day in and day out, walk across the hall, fire the question. Right now, they're here a couple days a week. You have a question, you've got to send an email, you've got to wait. It's really emergency, you've got to call them, but they call you back. And if there is a candidate out there that is strong enough, you know, I think I'd like to go back to that traditional model where you have people that are accessible to also all of you. I think that, I think TMS, at least my vision, how I'm seeing it, it's also caused a barrier for school members to check in with the business manager and how to get ahold of when are they there, are you free that day? So, you know, that kind of thing. So, you know, I think it's, again, I think when we look at candidates for this position, we're also, we have the ability to fall back on this if we're not able to find a candidate. So I think it's a win-win for us to do that. So that's, that's my, my opinion on that.
Bill?
I've, as chairman of the Budget Subcommittee for Frontier, I've never, I'm very uncomfortable. We've had two Budget Subcommittee meetings, and I'm very uncomfortable with the lack of knowledge that I have on the twenty-second or twenty-third of January, as far as the budget process goes. Both meetings were, the first one was a complete waste of time. Today's was, we had a nice talk, but I'm very uncomfortable with the amount of information that I have to supply, because I have the town finance committee and people that they start pecking at you already. And before, every other year, I've had stuff that we can talk about. I've got, you know, we've got some numbers that are, well, this is going to change, and that's going to change, and that's going to change. I haven't got it yet, and I haven't put it together yet. I realize this is a new process, but I, this isn't working for me.
Bob?
I think it's time we have to get somebody in here to look at how we're doing. And because I've asked questions about the insurance twice, and, you know, it hasn't been covered. We don't know where we are financially. We have a good idea, but we don't know simply because things aren't being followed up thoroughly.
Do you know if our A and D's been certified yet?
It's not. Usually by now, our A and D money's been certified.
Elaine, you have a question?
I was wondering, Darius, what your thoughts were, the previous business manager had negotiated a higher rate to take over some HR duties. Is that your plan in this position, too? Have you already assumed those yourself, or what's your plan for that?
Right now, those have been absorbed by other, TMS has not taken on HR, so they've been absorbed by myself, and I've also had office personnel help in the different areas, kind of dividing up the different things.
I'm not sure they really were absorbed, but that was the working theory prior.
Right. Yeah, so...
So it would be a strict business manager.
There is some areas where, again, having two people working at administrative, there were some things that the last business manager was able to help teachers with that we now avoid. She knew the retirement system well, was able to give advice on how to access it and the process. Right now, to be honest, some people were told to give that person a call on the side, you know, and see if they were just should just help out there, because we don't have that level of expertise in-house to offer that. So that would be a part of HR that is permanently missing. You know, right? HR that is currently missing. You know, my... Two curriculum coordinators have helped out a great deal. They've picked up some of more of those conversations and kind of pointed people in the right direction. But that the number... You know, when people are getting ready to retire, they're lining up their numbers. So, if, you know...
Yeah, we'd need that.
If people have any kind of chopped up service where they've worked in different places, it's a lot... It's a different kind of math problem.
Yeah.
And we don't... So, currently, we haven't been able to give that help.
On that point, is there a job description for this role?
There is a job description. It hasn't been updated since '05. So, I imagine that has to be updated prior to the posting to match what that needs are.
When do you think you'll post?
I'd love to post by February 1st. You know, I have the file on my desk. That's why I know exactly where the job posting is because I was reviewing it and, you know, looking at when the last time it was, you know, posted. So, it's all sitting on a file on my desk. Waiting for it. It's nice to...
I was assuming it's...
I'd like to make sure that we make those corrections in the proposed contract work before we offer it. So, people don't seem to think that they're going to get the same contract that existed prior with a former person who comes on. We need to straighten out the vacation time so that never happens again. And, you know, we need to go through it, look at the whole contract, you know, do our due diligence.
And the work has been underway to standardize administrative contracts, by itself.
Oh, I realize that. But we got... But we had a new contract that was signed after that work that already started. And this one didn't get brought into the line. I'm not blaming anybody because I don't think the two people that signed it actually concentrated on it. I won't blame them. Because the business manager prepared and just thought it was right.
So, I have a question. Do we, making up a job description or compiling a job description? Does the school committee do that? Or does the superintendent do that and then bring it to us? How does that work? I don't know. I mean, we hire the business person on your recommendation, but who compiles the job description? There's a job description there. Do we have to... Do we change it and then vote on it?
Do you want it done 2019 or 2020?
2017 would be good.
Because if you want it done 2019, let them do it.
No, but I mean, there's no precedent here.
So, what I could do is I could draft up a document, send it to everyone. They'll reply all. They can send me back any feedback and adjustment. Then I can say, adjust that to a final draft and send it out. It'll be voted on in February. You can already...
Don't can.
I can't post for the job description.
We can't post without...
But you don't have to vote on a job description. There's nowhere in the rules to say...
We also have a potential already for administrators, new administrators.
Well, you're talking about contract versus... I mean, I have a job description where we have to add a few lines and straighten.
I'm not talking about the job description. So, when somebody wants to know if this is the right position for me, they just don't apply to the 2005 and find out.
So, I would recommend, allow me to update the job description. I'll email it out to all of you. You can give any feedback. I'll kind of give a closing date for feedback and then I'll move forward with the job description. Unless people feel like they need to vote on the job description, which I don't think it's going to change. I mean, we're going to go off with a general... I'm going to take a general job description and manipulate it to our needs unless there's something very creative you want to see happen with this that the whole...
So, the second part of my question is HR. I don't think I understand where we left off with HR. Are we still going... Are we going to connect that to our business manager? Are we going to make that a separate position?
Kind of depends on the applicants, doesn't it?
Is it? Yeah, but it actually is a job...
It also, I guess, would depend on what are the descriptions of HR is a, you know... It's not a complete HR position. Because you think of HR in operation, if you have a... When one employee has a problem with another employee, they go to HR. They don't go to the business manager in a school system. They go to the principals and the administrative ladder that we have. And we have, you know, contracts and that kind of thing. But HR, you know, I guess we have to look through the job description. Where do we want to add some HR responsibilities, you know, as we see...
Because that changes the whole job description to just have Sarah be doing HR.
Keith's side is...
I just wanted to give it for consideration for contract or job description because there's always questions about evaluation of the business manager as well, or how you network down the chain there as well.
We can work that in there.
Yeah, it's come up before about how do we evaluate the business manager. I think it was...
Yeah.
Saying when you were asking, is that our purview? Or, you know, I think this is something that should be...
I think it'd be business manager. Who exactly evaluates the business manager? Can the superintendent evaluate? Or are they coming back at that level where you're side by side and not fucking down?
Elaine, Trevor, Bob, did you still have your hand up?
I just think it's a rare business manager that has the skills for HR because your business people, let's not put them in a box or, you know, whatever, but that is not generally their skill set to deal with HR type issues. Although, I get your point about retirement and things, you know?
You mean federalists?
Because usually, number crunchers are not always got the people skills.
Right. And where the businessman... I'm sorry, I don't know their hands. I was like jumping in. But where the business manager has been helpful is when people need help working with insurance.
Right.
You know, going out on disability and navigating that, which does kind of fall into...
Business manager.
Falls into business manager. You know, employee conflict or harassment. It's not go to the business manager where it would be in HR. So, there's very defined things there.
But those types of things are pretty well set in the contracts as well. I mean, in my job as business manager in the private, or the private school sector, I was HR. So, I don't know if that speaks to my personality.
I think it does, actually. As a psychologist, I say it does.
But, you know, it's... So, there is a lot that goes on in regular day-to-day operations, insurance questions, filings for taxes and things like that, that really, it's a logical extension for the business office to handle those filings and maintaining a lot of that documentation. But...
To me, that falls under business.
...administration and conflict resolutions, absolutely. We have a pretty clear-cut path in the public school sector for where people file grievances. And it's usually the superintendent and principal. I mean, it works its way up the administrative food chain.
I mean, I just think of the things I deal every day as an administrator, you know, people, you know, all sorts of people issues that don't fall in number categories.
Yes.
That have nothing to do with numbers or contracts or whatever. It has to do with going to detox or, you know, having a family issue or, you know, the things that come into work that...
I agree.
You know, that have nothing to do with their pay or benefits or not much to do with that.
Trevor was standing with that.
There's a huge need for HR. I can't speak for Frontier, but how the school system interacts with our town as it relates to HR, employee benefits and all that stuff. There's a firewall there a bit and it needs to kind of get broken down a bit. We, as a town, need immense HR help as well. We're looking at a lot of... We're looking for cog and different ways to regionalize some of that because there's a need immensely at the schools and there's need in town as well. Each of us can't really afford it that well, but maybe together regionally we can do some of that. But definitely, as things affect, you know, our elementary schools, and I can't speak for the other towns, but for Deerfield, we really need some more of like the homing of that. So, I know there's a huge need for HR. As everything gets more complicated, there's insurances and all. So, I'm in favor of HR as well.
And just because that was brought up is that right now, the four towns are talking with one another about putting together a grant to look at possibly shared position.
Yep.
Whether or not the school's involved with that or not, we're kind of... I'm waiting to see how that unfolds just because the number of employees we have compared to town changes that position immensely. And so, but I said I was open to looking at it. So, but I don't think we're ready.
No, not in this...
Not ready for that. We've got to move forward on this.
Yep.
So, are we to the point where... Oh, yes.
I just wanted to ask if we could get information about what other districts are doing, that maybe other similar districts, how they structure this? Because I would rely on Darius to guide us as to what best practices are. And I don't... I don't know if we've looked at that in the past as to... I mean, this is... HR is an important function to make sure we have cover. But I don't know if the school committee could come up with that on our own.
Cindy?
Don't forget, we also have a union.
I was just going to say that.
That in a sense is the HR for anyways, the teachers in the Paris. The union's sitting right over there.
Bob, then, Bill. I just want to make sure that Russ... We review all the documents related to draw this description or just include him in the email and see if there's anything in it that is obviously of concern to him so that we can don't make any mistakes going down the road.
And Russ will also review the contract for Darius also. Once we get that out together, Russ is the one that does up the contract for us and we bring it to him this time.
Bill? So, just on behalf of Frontier, I'd like to make the motion to decide for traditional business manager position.
And for the Union, do we have a motion?
Make that motion as well?
Make all of them.
I'll second it.
Can I just ask about that motion? We need to show traditional business manager means we're downplaying and you mentioned in the posting of the HR. Focus on number crunchers. Now, were you meant by that motion?
No, I was leaving that to the discretion of our guests.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to send out the job description. I'll add any HR stuff that was, that we would think would be relevant to it. And then I can give feedback on that way. If that's what you want me to do.
I just worry about putting in HR stuff in a posting that will turn off really good number crunchers that we may miss because we need a number cruncher first and foremost. And the HR discussion seems to be something that's going to evolve here. And so, and/or scare people away. I mean, we really need a number cruncher. So, I don't want to dilute that message in the posting.
Could I just... In terms of the motion, if we said to decide to conduct a traditional search for the business manager position instead of a conduct a search for the traditional business manager position? Or just conduct the search?
Judy's got a question. Hold on.
I have one comment and one question. My comment is, can't you just put in a blurb about preferred candidates would have experience with HR processes such as... You know, that way, if you... You can throw the... Cast out the net for the unicorn. And if you get them, great. And if you don't, oh, well, because you've listed all the other things in the requirements, like all the number crunching things that we always have. Like that's...
That's our most important thing is a number cruncher.
Right.
Not only that, you don't have to even use HR. You can say, should have available information on insurance processes and, you know, so you don't have to use the word HR.
That's a knowledge.
Exactly.
And any other duties related to...
Stop saying, you're good.
And my question is, what is the motion? Because I have the motion listed as to post the business manager position effective February 1st, 2019.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's still sad.
That's still sad.
For Frontier, all in favor?
And we'll go for the Union, just everyone. We'll go from there. I can always dilute the...
Water?
Can we get the hands up one more time?
I'm going to guess.
Are you unanimous again?
Phil voted. He just doesn't know yet.
Does anybody else want to add a little tidbit tonight about anything? You're here.
This is the best meeting ever.
If not, someone still have another meeting.
Motion to adjourn for the Union.
All in favor? For Frontier?
We have a motion for the Union.
Longest running streak of the night.
And do we have a second?
Elaine.
Elaine, geez, back on the game. All in favor? Everybody. Thank you.